Clerk Segrist could please call the roll, and we have to do a voice roll call to go into closed session. Could we do both in one?
Let's do it.
Okay.
Supervisor, I make a move to, I make a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing legal strategy around pending litigation for White Investments versus Canton Township.
Second.
And we'll go down in alphabetical order here with the voice, yea or nay. Anthony?
Yes.
Are these in alphabetical order? Foster?
Yes.
Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Segrist?
Yes.
Slavens?
Yay.
Snyderman?
Yep.
And I agree too. It's a great idea. Let's go into closed session. We're in closed session.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that the board return from closed session.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Following the, okay, we're gonna do a call for a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of item G zero to, yeah, Michael's got copies coming to us right now. Take them, pass them. Addition of G zero which is consider of ending the prior action of the board with respect to demolition of 870 Lots Road.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay. We have a call for a motion to approve one set of minutes from the January 28th, 2020 meeting.
And 25th.
I do have it here. I do have it here, thank you. Let me destroy.
I don't know. Okay.
What's the final one?
The 25th is not in the packet.
It's on ours.
On the screen.
Yeah, it's on the screen.
It says the 25th and the 28th.
Both of those, okay. Alright, good.
Call for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 25th and 28th.
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Now would be the time in our meeting for citizens non-agenda item. Any citizens non-agenda item, public comment. Seeing none at this time. Call for a motion treasurer Slavens for payment of the bills.
Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Clerk to read the consent calendar in a single motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt a consent calendar as presented with item C one. Consideration of second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 90 of the Canton Code of Ordinances, sections 90 to 93, the Cherry Hill Historic District, item C two. Consider approval of contract extension with Kennedy Industries, Wolverine Power Systems, and Interstate Security Incorporated, item C three. Consider second reading of an amendment to appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances regarding the Cedar Group investment rezoning.
Support.
Very good. Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Now moving into item G zero. Consider amendment of prior action of the board with respect to demolition of 870 Lots Road.
The former two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move that to amend the prior action of the township board ordering demolition of 870 Lots Road within 28 days of January 10, 2020.
In summary, on January 10th, 2020, the board voted to uphold the determination of dangerous buildings hearing officer that 870 Lots was a dangerous building and should be demolished within 28 days. Township ordinance and authorizing state law sets a minimum of 60 days within which demolition must occur, or if the legislative body of the township determines that the building or structure has been substantially destroyed by fire, wind, flood, deterioration, neglect, abandonment, vandalism, or other cause, and the cost to repair the building, the structure will be greater than the state equalized value of the building or structure. The owner, agent, or la cie shall comply with the order of demolition within 21 days after the date of the hearing under this subsection. And as discussed, we don't have that here, so we are suggesting these motions in front of us. Okay? So are there any board questions, comments? I don't expect any, but seeing none. Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Second motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to confirm the findings of the dangerous building hearings officer that 870 Lots Road is a dangerous building as defined in township ordinance, and that the building shall be demolished within 60 days of the date of the show cause hearing, which was January 10th, 2020. Demolition is not undertaken by the property owned within this, owner within this time period. The township is hereby authorized, as set forth by law, to undertake demolition and bill the property owner the cost of doing so.
Second.
In favor of the second, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Support.
Thank you. Diane has supported as well as Stephen. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Very good. Item G one, consider waiving the penalty for failure to file property, property transfer affidavits.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the following resolution of the Cheddar Township of Canton, Michigan, waiver for a waiver of penalties for failure to file property transfer affidavits. Whereas, the Township of Canton is aware that Michigan statute MCL 211.27A subsection 10 requires the buyer guarantee of or other transferees of a property to notify the appropriate assessing office within 45 days when a transfer of ownership occurs. Whereas, MCL 211.278 subsection 10 further requires that such notification be made on a form prescribed by the state tax commission, commonly known as the property transfer affidavit form 2766 or L4260. And whereas, the township is aware that MCL 211.27B subsection 1, C, and D provides for specific penalties to be levied if the appropriate assessing office is not notified within 45 days. Whereas, MCL 211.27B subsection 5 allows the governing body to waive by resolution the penalty levied under subsections 1C or D. Whereas, Canton Township assessing office has procedures in place to notify the buyer, guarantee, or transferee of a property within the property, when the property transfer affidavit has not been filed. Whereas, Township of Canton has determined the cost of to administer and collect the penalty, then share collected penalties with other taxing jurisdictions outweighs the benefit. Where, and whereas, the township finds the collection of penalties is unnecessary, now therefore be it resolved. The Board of Trustees of the Cheddar Township of Canton has provided in MCL 211.27B subsection 5 waives the collection of penalties under subsections 1C or D, and also any resolution policy or directive in conflict with this resolution is hereby repealed.
We have with us this evening in the audience, Mr. Aaron Powers from our assessor's office. If anybody has any questions, technical questions related to this issue. In terms of background, the township has not collected the late filing penalty since the inception of proposal A in 1994. The late file transfer affidavit collection fee would be another later a billing and collection for the township treasurer to collect. Also, the assessor's office audits the Wayne County Register of Deeds records on a monthly basis to ensure all property transfers are accounted for regardless if a purchaser delivers a transfer affidavit late or is a non-filer. Therefore, it's my recommendation township board continue not imposing by resolution the $200 late file transfer affidavit penalty. The passing of the resolution will ultimately satisfy the 2020 AMAR review as requested by the state tax commission. Are there any questions for Mr. Powers or myself? This is, we are not adding another layer of work for Diane.
Thank you.
By doing this. Okay? Very good. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G two, approval of budget amendment for professional and contractual services legal.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment. Increase expenditures for professional and contractual services legal account number in the amount of $35,000 and increase revenue to the fund balance appropriation account in the amount of $35,000.
Support.
In terms of a summary, the human resources department is requesting an increase in the 2020 budget line item professional contractual services legal in the amount of $35,000. The request is necessary due to anticipated initial legal expenses associated with mediation 312 by arbitration and the workers compensation protest. Are there any questions? Yes.
Do we anticipate this kind of being the norm later, or do we, if we're next year, that we're probably gonna just have to add this into the 2021 budget, or do we see this workload increasing and staying high at that level?
I think both issues that this is specifically addressing should be resolved this calendar year. So I don't anticipate it going into next year, but there are, as the board is aware, other things occurring that we should be taking into consideration for 2021. But Wendy, do you have any comments or?
This one is, for the majority of it, is specifically to address the union contract that expired in 2019 that has not been resolved yet to further resolve that matter. We have no contracts expiring in 2020 or 2021, so we don't anticipate having any large arbitration bills or mediation bills moving forward. So this hopefully is a one-time thing for this year until contracts expire again, and we may or may not need that in the future. But the next round of contracts expire in 2022 and 2023. So hopefully it's just a one-time thing, for a couple of years anyways. You're welcome.
No other questions? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. That's single motion, Mike?
Correct.
Very good. Item G three, consider approval of reappointments and new appointments to the community development block grant, CDBG Advisory Council.
Mr. Supervisor, this is in the form of two motions. I move to reappoint Catherine Martin and Sylvester Netzel to the CDBG Advisory Council for a three-year term effective January 1, 2020, and expiring on December 31, 2022.
Support.
Okay. In terms of background, the community block development grant advisory council is an advisory group of Canton, to the Canton Board of Trustees. Sylvester Netzel and Catherine Martin have over 20 years of experience and have expressed interest in continuing their service. To fill the vacant position, myself reached out to the residents who expressed interest in serving on CDBG after review of resumes. E. Colleen Conklin is being recommended for appointment by myself and also reviewed by Steve Snyderman and Summer Foster. But did the motion include Ms. Conklin?
She's the next one.
Very good. She will be the next one. Alright, so first up, we have reappointments of Netzel and Martin, and then we have a new person that's been approved that we'll do in the next motion. Are there any questions?
I was just wondering, are we getting a lot of resumes in? I know it was in the last focus, and we listed all the openings.
What we're actually doing at Summer's suggestion is actually changing the process, and we will no longer be taking resumes. There was a concern that there can be bias in how the resumes, how well they are done, you know, the fonts, whether somebody likes them or not, and that type of thing. So in the future, one, with the policy or the procedural change that we're voting on tonight, I don't know if that was an ordinance that Michael, we reviewed at the strategic planning session, all expiring appointees will be required to reapply for their positions, and they will have to apply online in a format that is a...
It's an application.
Yeah, it's an application kind of a form where you just, everybody will fill in the same blanks, and then in the future, Summer, myself, and Steve will be reviewing those to determine who to select.
So for all the resumes that we have, are we gonna ask, let those people know, hey, get online and apply, just kind of nudge them, give them a nudge?
Yeah, it's actually started.
Okay.
I don't know, are we live yet on that system?
Yeah, it went live February 1st.
And that application, the link is in, find it on the website.
New process in town. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of this motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to appoint E. Colleen Conklin to the CDBG Advisory Council for the remainder of Duke Morrow's unfulfilled term expiring on 12/31/2020.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
And I just wanna say, reading her resume, even though in the future we will not be allowed that courtesy, I can tell you, I was very impressed with her credentials, both a lot of it on the mental health side of it, but also working in grants herself. I think she'll be a great asset to CDGB. This is a great, great appointment.
She's got a very nice looking resume.
It's a lovely looking resume. I am biased, though.
He's so biased.
I like that font. I love that font right there.
Item G four, consider award to CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Contracts. Mr. Powers, you don't have to stay unless you'd like to. Okay. I do appreciate the support for the first item. Thank you very much, sir. All right. Item G four, consider award to CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Contracts.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the four housing rehabilitation contracts to Streton Home Improvement listed below totaling $95,800 and the associated budget adjustment utilizing CDVG grant dollars.
In summary, under Canton's Affordable Housing Program, federal dollars are used to pay for major and minor repairs to owner-occupied, single-family homes in Canton. The participating families must meet HUD income requirements. Formal bid procedures were followed, and a public bid opening was held on January 16th, 2020. The CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Program, the bid results for the projects ready for board approval are attached. Two companies submitted complete bids for the nine projects. The finance and budget department is requesting to approve contracts for multiple HUD/CDVG-funded home rehabilitation projects that exceed the $10,000 purchasing threshold. And they have been, the details are in the board packet. Also, as always, if anybody would like to review the bids in the packets that we have, they are in Wendy's office. So that also always stands for trustees if they want to come in and take a look. Are there, I think this is kind of routine, Mike, or Stephen?
Yeah, so I see four homes that we're doing, but the bids showed more homes, and then there was a mention of $10,000 clip, and so I just didn't totally understand the other ones that were bid on that we're not doing.
Right now, we are only awarding the ones that are over the $10,000 threshold. We haven't awarded the ones that are under that yet. We have a kind of a rush that we need to spend some federal grant dollars to be in compliance with the grant requirements. So we really wanted to award the homes first to make sure that we can get those projects started quickly and get those moving. At a later date, we'll determine which of the two vendors will be doing the mobile home. So the mobile home cap is $5,000 per home, and the actual homes are $25,000. So the homes are over the $10,000. Those are the ones we're bringing forth at this point in time.
The other question is, the budget amendment is for less than the total of all the houses?
Correct, because if you may or may not recall, we got some of our grant fund dollars returned to us.
Yep.
From somebody who didn't end up utilizing it all the way. So the $75,000 represents the grant dollars that came back into our financial statements to increase the revenue and increase the expenses. Additionally, we did budget some out of the current program year already to do some of these rehabilitation projects. So these are on top of what we would have initially gotten or performed with our current year grant allocation. It's because we got some of our money back from a previous grant year that we're trying to spend.
Thank you.
A homeowner's records check for delinquent taxes or homeowners association dues, liens?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I believe they are. They do have to meet certain income requirements on that. So they're typically a lower income, and once we, once we perform this housework, they do become a lien on their property. So we, if they sell their property within a certain timeframe, they do have to repay us for that. But I can, I can get back to you on that. I think the answer to that question is yes, but I don't wanna say that until I double check it.
The fact that there would be a lien on the property would or would not preclude the homeowner from obtaining the CDB loan?
Would there, would a lien preclude them from receiving it, if they had a lien on their property?
If there was a lien on the property, would that prevent them from getting the repairs?
I would have to double check that. I would assume the answer would be yes, but I would have to look at that and get back to you on that.
I'm pretty sure they were, I'm aware of one that had a lien, a homeowner's lien, and they got a new roof.
Okay.
But...
Yeah, I can double check and let you know on that.
This does, allows us to not have to send the money back to the feds and get it spent. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. And that was single motion? Correct. Okay. Item G five, consider approval of purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe K9 unit.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of the 2020 Chevrolet Tahoe.
Support.
MSD Fleet Services evaluates all the vehicles to meet the minimum replacement criteria each year and recommends replacement as part of the capital improvement program process. The township will again utilize existing publicly bid governmental pricing, contract administered through Wayne, Oakland County. The unit taken out of service will be auctioned off using our online auction site Bidcorp for disposal. The proceeds from the sale will partially offset the cost of the replacement vehicle. Total value of the 2020 Chevy Tahoe is $36,849, and there are adequate funds budgeted for this vehicle. Are there any questions for either Jade, Wendy, or Josh? It's, Josh, your crew's gonna be using the vehicle? Okay.
Do we expect to see Chevy Ta, like Tahos or Chevys in the future as police vehicles, or?
No, the only, the only purpose we have for the Chevy Tahoe is our K9 units because the size of the insert that goes in the back for the dog.
No further questions or comments. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item G six, consider award of contract to Dan's Excavating Inc. for the Rid, Ridge Road paving project.
This is in the form of three motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following, the budget amendment listed.
Support?
Oh, that's it?
Support.
Good. In terms of summary, Canton Township has publicly bid the Ridge Road Ford to Warren paving project and received seven bids ranging from $3,597,584,43 to $4,496,292,59. Our design engineer Fishbeck Inc. has evaluated the bids and adjusted the bid from Dan's Excavating to $3,596,396,43 based on minor discrepancies found after detailed review of their bid. Fishbeck has recommended the award of the project to Dan's Excavating Inc. Based on this information, Engineering Services recommends the award of Ridge Road, Ridge Road paving to Dan's Excavating, and the amount is stated with a 5% contingency. In addition, Engineering Services recommends the award of Ridge Road paving construction engineering to Fishbeck Inc. and the amount of 312,350 with a 10% contingency for total award for the engineering of 343,585. And we have in the, with us this evening Jade and your team member, would you like to introduce? If there are any questions from?
Mark Murky from the engineering.
Questions from the board, or? Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Can I just ask, I've looked through all this, and I can't figure out why did we, why are we just seeing an increase or discrepancy from before? I don't know, Jada?
Data that we've been discussing consistently for some time did not include the engineering value. Plus, there has been a continuing year-over-year increases in the materials for road paving products. I mean, that's what's been shared with me to date. I know, Mark, would you like to add anything, or Wendy, or Jade?
Are you referring to the original budget amount?
Correct.
So the original budget amount, I can only speak on behalf of what I've been told, was set about two years ago, and it's taken that long to go through the design and scope process and the bid process. So there's no way of actually knowing the exact bid price when, when we're setting that budget that far in advance. So that's where you're seeing the discrepancy in the construction. And then the previous amount that was, that was budgeted did not include the construction engineering, so it wasn't a total project cost that you guys were seeing. Moving forward, that is going to change. You'll see the construction engineering in collaboration with the actual construction costs in the budget.
Is that, I noticed you added a contingency for the engineering cost also. Did you also include one for engineer, for material costs?
Yes, 5% on the construction and 10% on the engineering.
Okay. See if anyone else has any questions.
Michael? Yep.
And I, correct me if I'm misremembering, I think when we had initially talked about the project, we were just looking at a surface kind of pavement, we, and I, was there something with the culvert where there was some additional costs associated with that? There was some more, more work that needed to be done?
I'm gonna have to pass that to Mark.
Waterway at Hanford?
Mark, come to the mic.
Yeah, can you come to the mic, because the folks at home will not be able to hear you. And the question was, the culvert or the creek that runs under, near Hanford?
Fellows.
Sorry?
Fellows Creek.
At Fellows Creek, okay. So you wanna re-ask the question, Michael, or?
I'll just, I think, I just, I thought I had, I was remembering that we hadn't anticipated the bridge being an additional cost or the culvert or whatever.
Yeah, we, we think that the, that the bridge may have been slightly underestimated in the original scope of the project, so that may have contributed a little bit to the higher costs as well. So in addition to what Jade has already said, the bid prices have gone up since a couple of years ago, so.
Now, another question. A resident who lives right there and come to the board about utility lines being, some frustration around that. Do you know, is there an update on what's going on with the utility?
So we were, we were out there today, actually, this morning with the resident, and I believe we came to a resolution on that. There were two options, either to take the DTE lines around the back of the property through the park, or to relocate them closer to his house, which was part of the issue that he, you know, he had a problem with. But then he also didn't want the lines around the back of the house obstructing his view to the park. So after a lot of negotiations and talk with the guy and laying things out and survey and showing where the lines would go, he's now amenable to the lines being relocated slightly closer to his home. So.
I think it's an accurate statement to say the DTE, the representative was very easy to work with.
There this morning, yeah. She's been the one that's really been mediating this. She's the one who's really forged this with him, yeah. So she was there this morning, yeah.
We always, we don't always hear that about DTE, so that's some good news coming.
Been fantastic, actually.
Yes.
Question about the SAD fund, or the, the special assessment fund. Do you know what's the balance of that fund will be once this, if the board approves this transaction?
Yeah, there's a lot of, I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but there was a Denton Road SAD years ago where the developer had borrowed money from the township to put in Denton Road, and it was about one and a half million dollars. They've been paying that off slowly since, I don't know, over the last 15 years or so. And they have been paying through, I believe it's the Uptown Development, been paying off more of their SAD as they've been making larger chunks of their investment over in Cherry Hill Village. So I believe they owe still another 100 or 200,000. I believe there's still about a half million dollars from the Denton Road SAD that will be remaining in that SAD fund. There's other SADS that are in a deficit because of some lawsuits that we lost years ago, or a couple of residents didn't have to pay right away. But there is still some money left, there'll still be a fund balance in there. And the money that went into that fund to fund that SAD for Denton Road was general fund dollars. So that's a legal use of the funds to go back to the general fund to be used for this purpose.
Okay. Lovely.
Additional questions, comments?
So on here, it also says that there, I mean, when would construction start? Because it's saying, note earlier than January 15th and completed by November 15th. I mean, this is gonna lock in what we're gonna pay, right? So we aren't gonna see any more material costs or anything like that?
No, the contractor, if, if you guys approve this tonight, we will have a pre-construction meeting within a week or two with Dan's, and we'll get started immediately. meeting within a week or two with Dan's, and we'll get started immediately. Due to the complications of the project with the DET line relocation, the bridge construction coordinating with not cutting down trees during certain times of the year due to the, the long-eared bat, all of those complications, we have to stage it very carefully. So, they're guessing that we won't actually start the bridge till later this summer, so like sometime in June, maybe. But they'll, they'll be working on other things. In the meantime, they just can't get the culvert done until then.
Just introduce a new concept for me. Long-eared bat, tree cutting period?
Yeah, you have to avoid the, the roosting, you know, cutting down trees during the roosting period, so.
Remember something like that?
I think the actual roosting period is in, is in June, but you're not allowed to cut trees in, in, in the springtime, I think it is, so.
We're running against that with the Veterans Hospital and the Planning Commission the other day.
Who knew?
Have we worked with Dan's Excavating before? Okay.
Is it a good experience?
I've worked them in other communities as well.
Ask about the bats since, since we kind of touched on that the other night. So, what happens with the bats? Because I mean, aren't they there, do we put them somewhere else or lure them somewhere else?
We just avoid cutting trees down during the sensitive time period. So, the area that we're in, they haven't identified that it's even, that there's even bats, you know, that there's even bats in that area anyway. So, DEQ set, or Eagle, says as long as you avoid the, the roosting period and cutting trees down during that sensitive time of year, and, and as long as they haven't identified that area as a sensitive area, where they, it's known habitat, then we're fine to cut trees down, so. So, we, we've applied for a DEQ permit. I keep saying DEQ, Eagle permit, yeah. So, they will tell us if we can't, you know, if there's a known roosting area there and we're not allowed to cut the trees down. They would certainly tell us that, so.
Lots of mosquitoes, we like bats.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, second motion.
Supervisor, I move to approve Dan's Excavating Incorporated for an amount of $3,596,396.43. I think I may have said that wrong. $3,596,396.43 with a 5% contingency of $179,819.82 for a total award of $3,776,216.25.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, third motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to Fish, approved a contract to Fishbeck Incorporated for an amount of $312,350 with a 10% contingency of $31,235 for a total award of $343,585.
Support? Those in favor of the third motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G seven, consider approving amendment to partnerships and architecture contract for AE services on the fire station.
One moment, Mr. Supervisor. My packet crashed, but I'm gonna open it right back up here.
Would it be acceptable for me to read the motion for you? While you're doing that or no? Would you prefer to...
If you wanted to go for it?
Okay, yeah. The motion that Clerk Segrist would present, if his computer comes up, would look like, "I move to approve a contract amendment for partners in architecture in the amount of $7,998 to cover the reimbursable costs incurred for the site work performed outside the original scope of services quoted for fire station number two."
Support.
Good. In terms of background, the fire department's requesting this increase based on the architecture and engineering services with partners in architecture, and the amount is stated for the reimbursable costs incurred in addition to the original scope of work. These permitted plan review fees are related to the additional floodplain and wetland site work that was required of us by Wayne County and Michigan DEQ on the fire station property. So, the bodies that have the jurisdiction over those items in the project demanded that we do the additional work, and here we are today asking for your approval to do that. Are there any questions, comments for Director Meyer, or seeing none? Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G eight. Why does that look, okay. Consider approval amendment, amendment to partners in architecture contract for, again, AE services on fire station two.
That's an error, that's what threw me off.
Duplicate, thank you. There we go, much better. Consider the purchase of 12 Taser X26P units and accessories.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to waive the bidding process and approve the purchase of 12 Taser X26P packages from the sole source vendor, Axon Enterprise Incorporated, in the amount of $19,994.50.
Support.
In the past, the board has approved the means of a less lethal force application to be used by our police officers. The department policy was established for Tasers to be purchased and carried by all sworn officers. The annual purchase will phase out the last of the department's older models and will accommodate the department's increased staffing needs. Are there any questions for Director Meyer? Go ahead, Michael.
I'll just make a brief statement. I think this is fantastic. I understand the failure rate on Tasers nationwide is pretty high, and so I'm glad we're phasing out the old equipment and getting a new equipment that will function when needed, ideally never needed.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, item G nine, consider amendments to the approval operations policy seven oh, oh seven, procedure for conduct of township board meetings.
Supervisor, I move to approve operations policy seven and the proposed amendments.
Support.
Good. In terms of a summary, operations policy seven is a township board approved procedure for the conduct of board meetings, and has outdated processes and language from the old that has been amended, was discussed, the proposed, were reviewed at the board meeting that we held on January 25th, 2020. Future, future board members shall be given a copy of the rules adopted pursuant to the provisions of the section seven, six of the Public Act 359 of 1947, the Charter Township Act, MCL 42 dot seven. And furthermore, this ties in or brings in now the requirement that all appointees reapply once their terms expire, in addition to the other updates to the document. Are there any questions for Clerk Segrist? We went through this in detail during our strategic planning session. Seeing no questions or comments at this point, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's a lot of work, Mr. Clerk Segrist. Yeah. And that was a single motion? Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, does that bring us to our conclusion of our regularly scheduled program? It does. Are there any public comment? Any public comment? Mr. Miller, please, now would be the time. Actually, we removed it.
George Miller, I'd like to know on Tasers, there's an incident that's happened with your body cameras and video cameras and, and sound the officers use. I'd like to know the protocol and the procedure for using them when they're turning on and turning off possibly. And I'd like to know, since some of them have failed, I'd like to know what you'd be doing to correct the issue. Since the body cameras have failed, they've actually failed. That's for a fact. Next thing is the trees. I'd like to know what we can do if, replace these trees, the quota, whatever it may be the township has in the ordinance. If you cut down a tree, for example, a foot, it has to be replaced with one by six inches. And so, you have to replace, there's a quota. I'd like to know if that's gonna be upheld here, what we, what you guys talked about and voted tonight. Then, the next thing, I'd like to know about, I brought it to your attention, a hoist on the vans for elderly people to help them in and out and transporting them around the township. I want to know how that's proceeding, or if that's just a dead issue. Next thing is, I'd like to know how the things are proceeding with the recycling facility, since there's been a tur of one. What's the outcome? And where, if they're going to do it, where is it going to be located in the township? And if composting is gonna be part of it, because we've had problems with that in the past in this township. And I'd like to just, especially as just the issue on the body cameras where they have failed for sure.
Mr. Miller, I'm gonna take care of the easy one that I can, which was the last question. Yes, sir. The recycling facility is located in...
Boston.
New Boston. It's not in Canton Township. It is in New Boston. And our current vendor, I don't want to get into a debate or discussion, I'm just sharing with you, it's in New Boston. And our current vendor, GFL, acquired it from their previous supplier, and composting is not part of that program. Then that's not in the plans currently. So, at this point, is there any additional public comment? Please. Mr. Parker?
I'm Bob Parker, 6806 Weathersfield. I know recently you've had some meetings with Wayne County about the roads, and one of the issues which continues to be asked about is how much money Wayne County spent on our roads in Canton, and also what is the amount of money they're planning on spending in 2020. And I know that's a very hard...
Are you ready? Can someone do a drum roll for me? Okay, it came through the email last night. Jade and I are still looking at it, trying to understand exactly what they've communicated. And Bob, you and many other residents are asking exactly the same question as well as the elected board, yeah, trustees. Everybody's been asking the same question for years. Lo and behold, we have the answers. Now, what I'm asking Jade to do is, there's two components of it. There's the county money with what the county's done, and what county exec, Mr. Evans promised and he, and he has delivered, is we've got the 18 projects, the 19 projects, and what's planned for 20. So, that's in writing from the county. We're just making sure we understand it, right, before we share it publicly. And then, there's gonna be the second component of that is, what did Canton do with Canton dollars that matched up or increased projects? And what specific projects and how much was spent where? So, Jade's team's gonna be requested to do that. So, it, it folds or blends in with the county data. So, you can see the whole picture. Jade, am I stating that correctly? And is, that is doable, we believe?
Yes. I mean, if you'd like, I can give the generic numbers. So, in the last two years, the county's spent $7.7 million on our roads. We have not gone through and dissected all those yet, and I don't have the township's numbers to add to that yet. But as of right now, that's what we have, and we just got this information. So, your question is timely, and we're getting that information prepared so we can actually submit that out to the public. I guess it's out there now.
It just happened, so we're still trying to understand what we're looking at, which is, yeah, okay.
Oh, and then the projects for 2020, are we gonna be putting them on the website at some point? Is it public now?
We received them, so yes.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Is everyone's favorite ones on there by any chance, or no?
I don't know what your favorite is.
Sheldon?
Section Sheldon Ford to Warren.
Ford to Warren?
You know what, I don't even want to say that without, I want to cross the t's and dot the i's before we go out with this, okay? I don't want to make any mistakes. Is there any additional public comment? Mr. Schultz?
Michael Schultz, 44580 Dion Street. It butts right out onto Sheldon Road. I know we're in for 20 years on this tax. Is Sheldon Road anywhere gonna be in the next 20 years?
Yes.
Good, good. Sometime back, somebody asked a question about what it takes to be on the Building Board of Appeals. I'm on the Building Board of Appeals. Most of the people are builders, there's one architect. My background is in mechanical and electrical. So, the, the answer is, there's, to become a journeyman, 8,000 hours. Become a master, 12,000 hours. 10,000 hours for a mechanical license, 10,000 hours for a boiler license, four years of engineering school. Before I ever go out, when we have a, something that comes up, they give us a little bit of notice. I always go and visit the site to figure out what the feasibility is. Most of the guys are builders. I'm now, know a whole lot about building. I mean, built a few houses, but, so I just put my little two cents worth in, and we get paid pretty good. I think it's 50 bucks for about five or six hours. So, that's the answer to that.
Thank you. At this point, seeing no additional public comment, I see we have a scout in the audience. Thanks for joining us this evening. Pretty boring meeting tonight, which we like, I like to have boring meetings every time, but staff, is there, directors, any comments you'd like to make? Programming coming up soon. Let's see.
This weekend, there is the Earth's Prehistoric Aquarium Adventure for Kids at the Village Theater, which is gonna be, it's a world, it's quite well-attended and quite popular in Australia, and they're having productions in the US. So, it'll be a very cool production there. So, I'd encourage people to come check that out this weekend.
Thank you. All right. Any board comments? Diane, please, yeah?
A quick reminder to the residents that taxes, your winter taxes, are due by the end of the day on Friday, the 14th of February. So, just a little reminder to everyone.
Michael?
Two things. One, somebody talked about it already, but we did have a tour last week of the recycling facility, GFL, which is fantastic, because I've heard a lot of concern from residents over the last year or so, concern about what gets recycled, what doesn't get recycled, rumors, right? Lot of discussion nationwide about recycling piling up on the shore of California because China won't take it anymore. So, it was, it was really fascinating to get, to see all the production processes, to find out what happens with the end result of the material, where they sell it to, how they handle it. So, it reassure, kind of, I'll have a lot less, less concerns after kind of seeing the process in place. But most importantly is, just don't put trash in your recycling. That's the number one issue.
Or plastic bags.
Or umbrellas.
Or umbrellas, or, right, kitchen night. We saw a lot. So, you know, there are people whose job it is to go through that stuff, and, you know, God bless them, because I, you know, that's a, that's a tough, that's a tough job with what some people put in those bins. Outside of that, it's election season right now. We've got one coming up March 10th. It's an exciting, an exciting one. We've already got twice as many absentee ballots sent out than we had returned four years ago for the presidential preference primary. So, we are, we're churning away in the clerk's office. Those of you who've got a ballot out, you know, get that one back in. If you haven't gotten your ballot yet, keep in mind, it used to be manila in colored. It is now white with blue, blue, white and blue. And the return envelope is white and green. So, just make sure you keep an eye out for that. That is not spam, that is not, or junk mail, or whatever that is. That is, that's your ballot. That's that.
Additional board comment? Seeing none, call for motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's done. Thank you. Good night, be safe.